Two thousand twenty-four and is being recorded. And welcome Janet Thompson, we will be your speaker and as is our custom, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself and tell us about what's going on with you and the county and your election.
Well, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today and especially since yesterday, I spent most of the day at a board meeting for the Missouri Association of Counties and the first steering committee meeting for our policing, justice and mental health group for MAC. Uh, this is every year the the steering committees are reconstituted. And so that was the the first meeting of that new group. So this is a perfect way for me to to tell you all what's happening here in Boone County from my perspective at least and um on a state level, what's happening because of a lot of the work that's happening here in Boone County. So I think everybody knows, but I'm Janet Thompson. I'm the Northern District Commissioner and um seeing here on this um this group of folks, I remember that first year talking to Dr. Luthold, um, talking to Herb and Sue. Um, especially you all were the some of the first people with whom I spoke. And I appreciate your counsel, um, all of your counsel and your um support through these last twelve years. It's been it's been really exciting to see what's happening here in Boone County. And although we have a long way to go, I think we've come a long way in the last twelve years. Uh, as I, as I thought about talking to you today, I remembered a comment that Karen Miller made to me early on and it turned out um from something else I saw, I think she stole it from Ann Richards. Uh, Ann Richards had always said, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And that really has stuck with me for and has made me make sure that to the best of my ability, Boone County is at the table. Uh, and and so that's what we've been doing for the last twelve years. So when I first came to the commission, you know, I had, I came in with no um having had no thought of of politics, um, having no thought about any of that for myself for a long time until um Barbara Hoppy and Debbie Daniels suggested to some folks that this might be a good thing for me. So, but I had had um a twenty-five or, you know, almost twenty-five-year period of of time as a public servant, as a public defender. And so my background had been um in the justice system and seeing things that happened to my clients and to their families and and my inability to help folks on that level. Um, and seeing generational involvement in the justice system. And so that's really has, that's informed a lot of where I am as a as a county commissioner and what um what it turns out is important across across Boone County and across the country. So in my first year on the county commission, Karen, again, Karen had suggested the that something I needed to do was become involved in the National Association of Counties. And I attended, I remember attending a NACO, that's the acronym for the NACO Legislative Meeting in um February of that year, that first year. So I was green to the county commission and green to NACO. And I attended a Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee meeting. And I listened to some of the things people were talking about and I was like, well, that's what I've seen for twenty-five years in my practice. And maybe these folks um are talking about the same issues, but from a different vantage point. Same issues across the country, matter of scale often just because of the size of a jurisdiction and the number of people that that are engaged in the problem. But these were folks across the country that were working on solutions from the government side, not from a public defender or prosecutor side. So I really, I I started looking at that and thinking, how can we utilize some of these national and regional resources in a way that can help us do better? And one of the first things that we started to do was we joined a thing called the Stepping Up Initiative, which was an initiative started by the National Association of Counties and SAMSA. Because across the country, people were looking at this and saying, my gosh, if you look at a jail population, there's such an overrepresentation of people in our jails with folks with mental illness and substance use disorder. And even and and those people were recidivating at a higher rate and they were having worse outcomes um than people that without those disorders who had been charged with the same offenses. So we started looking at that and saying, gosh, what what should we do? And one of the first things that we saw was there was a a process that SAMSA had designed that was called sequential intercept mapping, which, you know, you always have a big name for something, but what that was, was it was a process that as a community, you start, you look at all of the resources and you allocate those resources on a map that says at each time in which somebody might inter intersect or or um engage with law enforcement or the courts, what are the resources at each one of those steps in the process? And that ran from somebody who is in crisis, but not yet gotten the attention of law enforcement all the way back through reentry into the system. And so the first, one of the first things we did was we got people from across the community to agree to participate in one of those SIMs. And Steve Lamberty, who was the son of Dr. Joe Lamberty, who was the chair of the psych psychiatry department at MU, um, Steve came back to town and he facilitated that first SIM. And as I look back, so that was pretty early on in the process, as I look back at that, some of the suggestions that came out of that first SIM are finally coming to fruition. Um, we, you know, we as a community, all of these community stakeholders said, gosh, we need to be able to have a way to coordinate efforts. We need to stop having everything in silos across our community and we need to have a way to engage everybody and say, let's, instead of um, you know, Al over here doing this and Bob over here doing this, and they're working on the same issue, but from different vantage points, let's bring them together and let's bring those resources so that we can utilize resources better and help those people better. And so this year, and thanks to you all and the rest of the voters here in Boone County, that we have Kip Kendrick as our presiding commissioner, having his support on the commission has allowed us now to move forward. We are, we have a um, a person in our community services department who will be facilitating the creation, what we're of what we're calling a Health and Justice Coordinating Council. That will be that umbrella organization under which all of this work can be done and and then comes up through the top and back down into the into the um the work that's being done in the community. And with that, um, this is scary for those of you who do this for a living and especially those of you who've been in healthcare or around healthcare, will be doing data sharing. Data sharing can sound scary, but when you think about it, wouldn't it be nice if you knew that person A, um, like if if you've got somebody coming into your hospital, that you knew what that this person had had involvement in certain in certain areas of the community, that this this person had had access to certain resources? If you're in law enforcement, to know that a person has had um mental health challenges so that when you respond to a call, you come with the eye to de-escalate rather than to use a taser or to use a gun. So it's all those kinds of things. So back in the beginning, um, we we started with that. We started with that sequential intercept mapping. And one of the first things that came out of it at that time was one of the um Department of Mental Health had created a thing called um Community Behavioral Health Liaisons. And so we had gotten one that was assigned to more than ten counties. One person who was supposed to help law enforcement respond to um problems across ten counties. That's kind of a problem when you look at it and say, gosh, I'm law enforcement and I'm calling for help to de-escalate something here in Boone County and our CBHL is over in Pettis. Makes it difficult. So one of the first requests was that Boone County get a CBHL designated to Boone County. That has happened. And now we have a CBHL who's dedicated to Boone County and we have a second CBHL that we share with Randolph County. So we've gotten some some good stuff happening there. Um, some of you, I think, has Stephanie Morrell talked to you all yet?
No.
Okay, so um, as you all know, Stephanie is um is running for Circuit Judge. She's an Associate Circuit Judge now. And she hears, she works a lot with our public administrator. And one of the things that she does now is um since Leslie Schneider retired, Stephanie has been facilitating um these mental health staffings that happen every two weeks at um through the courthouse. That's something that also came out of our work because Rusty Antel and I kept looking and saying, is there some way that if somebody is in our jail that has mental health challenges? How can we address those problems in a more cohesive way? How how can we help these people to get the services they need or to get the treatment that they need or to get through the system better? And um, we thought if we had a way to draw everyone together and talk about it, we could facilitate those conversations and get a better result. And so I reached out to friends at NACO and said, have you ever heard of something that might look like a mental health staffing for the folks who are in our county jail? And um, the folks at NACO said, we've never heard of it, but there's two counties that might have done it. One is Ramsey County, Minnesota, and the other is Johnson County, Iowa. So I called Ramsey and they said, we've never heard of it. But if you if you find out that that exists, please let us know because we want to try it. I called Johnson County and they said, we've been doing it for five years and it's reduced our jail overcrowding issue to where we've got a manageable population and we're moving people with mental health challenges in a better way through the system. So Stephanie now is facilitating those convers- those bi-weekly conversations among all of the players so that every single person with identified mental illness in our jail is subject to staffing every two weeks. So that's something that's happening a lot. Um, it's not, you know, the work that's been happening hasn't just looked at the um, the work in the jail. But I also remember from the very get-go um, working on issues with children. And the the meeting I was in yesterday, we talked about, you know, do we always work on helping people who are in the system? Or can we work at some point and put resources towards folks who are at risk? How do we do that? And um, a lot of times we'll talk about that in terms of that stream with bodies that we see coming down the stream. And we've all, we've probably all used that analogy, you know, when how do you, when you start pulling bodies out of the stream? Um, what, why are they in the stream in the first place? And so the the response when we're pulling bodies out of a stream, it's to to make sure that, you know, we're we're catching people who are in crisis. But the real question becomes, how can, you know, if you've got so many bodies in the stream, maybe we should go upstream and find out why they're in the stream in the first place? Has the um, has the stream bank crumbled underneath them and they've just slipped in? Have they fallen in? Have they been pushed in? Have they jumped in? So a lot of that's happening here in Boone County and I and those are questions that, you know, in terms of of what we're doing, we're do, we're working on that in a lot of different ways. And we started that in the last twelve years with a program that was through the Pritzker Foundation. Because we were chosen to be part of a co, the initial cohort of a prenatal to three work group. And, you know, when you look at kiddos in Boone County um, and you look at the various metrics of whether those kids are going to succeed, a lot of the problems we're seeing is because of the lack of resources for families of color and families in poverty. And sometimes those intersect. And and when we looked at that and we've got the data from the health department, we realized that a lot of moms um, it during pregnancy didn't have the resources that the the wealthier moms had, the moms that are better resourced, they didn't have those resources. So the question became, what can we do to sustain a mom and keep the keep services going with mom from prenatal to three? And so we created a program called Brighter Beginnings. And that's a, it's a maternal visitation program that's now embedded in the house, in the health department so that moms that need those kinds of resources continue to access those resources until the child is three years old. And that's and that's become the model for our health department. That's become the model for the state health department to keep those kids thriving and to make sure that kids that don't have, don't have the resources in the family end up with um the as as equal a chance to thrive, excuse me, as any other child in our community. So we've started work on that. Um, and right now, our Children's Services Fund, um, our board is actually looking at an extension of that, which is how do we, how do we make um access to high-quality early childhood education possible for every child in our community? So that's something that's coming. Um, you know, when you look at at the data, that's something that is probably the best use of our dollars, the best use of any resources is to keep those kids out of whatever systemic involvement is to put funding into high-quality early childhood education. So I think that's something to look for as we move forward. Um, I'm going to jump around a little bit, but just wanted to kind of give you all a flavor of the things that we've been doing. Moving back to the jail, um, you know, when I look at the folks in our jail, something that's that's really been a problem and and as a public defender, I saw it happen, but I wasn't clear on why it was happening. Um, my clients typically, I mean, I I represented folks who were um, who had were charged with a capital offense so that they didn't have an opportunity to bond out. But um, but most folks have an opportunity to bond out. And here's a problem. If you, if we're working on a cash bond basis of whether you stay in jail or not for an offense, um, say Herb and I are charged with the same offense. And Herb has the funds to bond out and I don't. Well, in that, in that time, so Herb's going to bond out and he's going to be back on the streets. And Janet's going to stay in our county jail. And because of a federal policy called the Federal Medicaid Inmate Exclusion Policy, Herb and I, again, we were, we were working off the same sheet of music, same charge, and both of us were eligible for the same federal benefits. Because Herb bonded out before thirty days had run, he remained eligible for and received his federal benefits. Janet, because she didn't have the resources to bond out, is still in county jail and under that policy has now, by when thirty days runs, Janet loses eligibility for her federal benefits. So she, if Janet's a veteran, Janet loses her veterans' benefits. If Janet is on Medicaid, Janet loses her Medicaid benefits. She loses her SNAP benefits. She loses all of her benefits. And even though Missouri has now gone to, because of the work we've been doing, um, Missouri has gone to a suspension state status rather than a termination. That time that Janet's in county jail, somebody's got to come up with the funds, the resources to provide for the medical care, for the mental health care, for whatever it is. And when Janet gets out, there's got to be, there's going to be time where she's still not covered because um she has to reapply for benefits. That's a huge problem. Boone County, we're better off than some counties because we have some resources that we can put towards folks who are in our county jail. But it's still not a great place to be when you need mental health care. And most counties in Missouri and most counties across the country don't have the resources to provide those benefits to folks who are in county jail. So that's something that we've been working on and I was on the, a task force um to do away with this policy or at least to say, let's pull it back and not and make it not apply to folks who have not yet been convicted of an offense. Because by applying that policy to someone who's merely been charged with an offense, what we've done is we've said, um, we're, we're denying them that benefit of the whole presumption of innocence. We're saying, just because you've been charged, we're going to take away your benefits. So that's something that we that we're working on. Um, we're also something that ha, that is partially in our jail setting, but partially not. If you would raise your hand, please, if you've heard of the nine-eight-eight um call line, the new nine-eight-eight call line. Yay. Okay, um, so it was stunning to me when the federal government, and I guess I shouldn't have been stunned, but federal government rolled out nine-eight-eight and there was no rollout with first responders. First responders didn't know how they were going to integrate with the nine-eight-eight call line. And so I called a, I called a group of the of our local first responders together and said, we've got to, we've got to talk about this. And I asked the folks from Burl, Carissa Kessler, who is the person in charge of crisis services for Burl in our region, asked Carissa to present to the first responders to say, how does this work? How is this nine-eight-eight call center supposed to work? And as a result of that conversation, I I asked Carissa, I said, seems to me like, couldn't we have a call taker, a nine-eight-eight call taker embedded in our nine-one-one center? So that's happening now. We're working through the agreement with Burl to have a call taker, a nine-eight-eight call taker in our nine-one-one center so that calls can be transferred immediately to nine-eight-eight. If they come in as a nine-one-one call, they can be transferred over to nine-eight-eight and somebody can be dispatched. The appropriate people can be dispatched to that, to that call. Um, and and as luck would have it, Carissa is connected to the folks that are doing that. So she's expanding what we're doing here in Boone County to other jurisdictions. That's becoming the national model to have that, yeah, to have that um, that connection made with a nine-one-one call center. So I think that's really, that's really important. Um, thinking back to yesterday, my my meeting, my meeting with the, our steering committee, our purpose in meeting yesterday was to say, how are we going to approach the state legislature? How are we going to work with whoever our governor is, that person's transition team on issues that are affecting us directly in every county in Missouri? One of those questions, and so we've been working to develop our priorities. So whoever our governor is, we want to be ready to say, these are our priorities on on justice, on on mental health, on substance use disorder, those kinds of things, to say, listen to us. One of our priorities is to do something that, again, with Kip and Justin's help, we're going to do here in Boone County, we're going to have a reentry navigator position for our jail. Because one of the things we've seen across the country is when you just kick somebody out of their jail, out of the jail, if they don't have resources, I I see very Joe going, yeah, if you don't have resources attached to that person, you don't have somebody helping them along the way, they're going to be back in the jail quicker than you can blink. We've got to connect them to resources and it's not to say, here Janet, here's your, here's the card for your appointment at with Burl next Tuesday at nine o'clock. And oh, you don't have a car, do you? And oh, for the next week, you don't have a place to live and you don't have a, you don't have food to eat. Oh, and you don't have your meds. So that's going to be kind of difficult for you to show up next Tuesday at nine o'clock. But good luck with that. So we're creating a a reentry navigator position and we're doing this on the adult side. Our goal is to have that also on the juvenile side with a navigator also for the parents. Because when those kids are sent back into a home from juvenile, often the parents are part of the issue that got them into that system in the first place. So we're creating this reentry navigator position for for us um, to help both our adult population and our juvenile population not recidivate as as at the level they have. Um, and finally, as part of the work that we've been doing, I don't want to keep talking for too long because you guys might have questions. Um, you know, in the last few years, we've worked on this upward mobility project. And upward mobility, um, I keep thinking about Steve Callaway. When we first got the opportunity to participate in this upward mobility project, Steve Callaway said to me, don't do this to us. Don't do this for us. Do this with us. So the upward mobility project has helped Boone County to create a model whereby the community has a voice. The community sets the objectives and then helps us to develop the path forward to get there. And we're using results-based accountability to say, um, what is it that we need to do to be able to reach that goal? How do we reach that goal? And so we're working on early grade literacy. We're working on workforce development and we're working on housing. And I I I suspect you all have gotten um information about, maybe you've participated in conversations, especially around housing, because we have done a housing study here in Boone County to say, what is it that we need to be able to help our citizens thrive? And housing from emergency housing to transitional housing to affordable housing, all along the whole spectrum. All the, along the whole spectrum. Um, because those are the questions really that are, are driving our community. You know, we've, we've discovered through listening to. Um, to businesses. That we're gonna need thirty five thousand new homes in Boone County over the next twenty five years. Can you imagine? That's just stunning. So how do we do that in a way that create, that? Doesn't destroy community but creates community. How do we make sure that? Um, that we create something that create. Areas that don't require. Transportation, but that don't require a car. But that have access to other kinds of transportation or that have services close by for people to, to utilize. Um, because all of these things, you know, when we've, just when I've talked to you just briefly about the things we're doing. So many things are based, so many issues in our community are based on what we have. And what we don't have. And something that has stayed with me for so long is when I started looking at the map of Boone County. And I looked at Broadway. Running through the middle of Columbia. On one side of Broadway versus the other side of Broadway. The average income. There, there was a forty thousand dollar gap. Between average income on the south side of Columbia and the north side. Of that street. That is something that is so telling. And we have to address those inequities in every system. Because in my, uh. From, from my perspective, every family, every child. Has. Should have. An equal opportunity to thrive. We have to be able to, to, to create equity so that our community can be better. Um, you know, all we've done, if we, if we continue that inequity, as we say to that group of folks. We're not, we're not helping you to become more. And we're, and we're actually saying, we don't want you to become more. So it, it is a, you know, when I talked to, I can't even remember who called and said, you know, what do you want to call this conversation? Maybe it was Pam. Um, you know, a path toward equity. I think that's what all, all of the work that we're doing is geared towards, what does equity look like and how do we get there for this community? So that's sort of a, um, a brief overview of some of the things that, that have been going on. And, um, I'm really excited through NACO this year. I've been. I was appointed the Chair of the Healthy Counties Initiative for NACO. And what we're looking at there is looking at, um, food insecurity. As an issue. Um, violence that, that especially, um, violence to which children are exposed. Um, including gun violence. And, um, and housing. Because those are issues that are affecting everyone across the country and it's just a matter of scope. So that's, that's where, where my, my time has been spent. Along with figuring out more about our roads. And, and handling some road issues. So that's what I know. And I hope you all have some, if we can have some conversation, that'd be great.
I, I do see at least five of us proud but impoverished North Sliders here at this meeting. But I wanted, I wanted to ask, um. In sharing health and mental health data, do you run into, uh, issues involving HIPAA and, and how do you get around that?
Yeah, so, um, and I always tell people that in my estimation, when people say HIPAA. That means that they, they're actually saying no. They, they just, we don't want to share. Um, to, because too often they're not even. They're not even looking at the statute. To say, does, does HIPAA even apply? And there are ways in the data sharing, um. Platforms that we're looking at, um, implementing to. Share data and share it appropriately so that we don't, so that we don't violate HIPAA. Um, typically we use. Business associate agreements. So that people can share the data. And, you know, when I look at this group, for instance, and, and if you, you know, choose a, um, choose what, what. Um, role you would play. Often if, when I look at it from my perspective, I wouldn't have access to the granular data. Um, because I just need high level, so my permissions would be very limited. But the people that need to know and that, that need to have access could have that access under the business associate agreement. Um, one of the platforms that we're looking at putting in place here is something called My Resource Connection. Which was designed by the folks over in Johnson County, Kansas. It's super. Um, and it's been, Johnson County has more money than God, so it's not really relevant to us. But their, their, um, program has been transported to Douglas County, Kansas, which is. Um, Lawrence. And Lawrence is more like us. The resource level is more like ours. And they've been able to get KU Med Center on board. They have integrated that and so they've already gone through that process. So, um, I know that. That people will start screaming, but they'll at least have, when we put this in place. They'll be able to talk to their pals over in Kansas to say. How, how were your concerns about privacy rights met through this program? Um, because we, we need to have the buy-in. But we also need to do the data sharing so that people, so that people can be better about how we serve these populations. And how we utilize resources. So it's a business associate agreement and then the levels of permission within that, um, take care of the, a lot of the HIPAA stuff. And the, and the other concerns. I mean, there's privacy, there's other privacy statutes. And regulations that, and, and Mari's probably, Mari could probably tell you chapter and verse on that, but. That's how, that's how it's done through those data sharing platforms. But good question. I mean, that's, that's, that's a big piece of it, right, is to get people. Um, willing to do it and, and comfortable with doing it.
How are the mental health professionals responding to it?
Um, they're really, they're actually really excited about it. Because they see, they see so much that they're. That they've struggled with because they don't have access to a lot of the information that would make. Their treatment so much easier. Um, you know, because when, you know, when the mental health professional is trying to figure out. Um, this person's involvement in other systems. This would give them access to that. So it's, you're not relying on the client's memory. Um, you're not relying on what the client's telling you, but you have more data in the system so that you can help. Like link people with the right, with the right resources. So they're really, they're super excited about it. And, and all of them, when you get them in the room together, they're like, oh. That's how that works. Because all of a sudden they see, you know, they see that they can serve people better.
Uh, Pam has a question, Pam?
I'd like to know about how many people call nine eight eight per day.
That's a question I'd have to ask, um, Carissa. I do not know. The, one of the things that, that's happening now and, um. And they're seeing, they're seeing it being used quite, quite regularly. Um, but their trans, they're, one of the things that's happening with nine eight eight is. That they are, they figured out the first way it was put together. Um. And this was especially relevant for here in Boone County. You think of a kid from California who's going to school here. The nine eight eight, um. System was first set up to where. Who would answer your call was from the area code. That your, that your phone is from. So that kid, that student from California. That's going to school here at Mizzou. Would have somebody answer that's in California. So they, yes, which is like, okay, so they don't know the, the resources here. So they're fixing that system so that, so that they're connected. To the place where they are fit, where that person is physically. So, um, Carissa said it's being utilized a lot and most of the time. Um, the caller's issues can be resolved with that mental health professional that answers the call. Um, because that's their goal is to try to resolve that question. If it can't be, that's why we've. We've, you know, we're embedding that, that, um, call taker. At the nine one one center, because there are some of those folks that need more than just the. De-escalation on the phone. They need further, they need somebody to come. And it might be that they need to come. With law enforcement or they need to come with. The fire department or they need somebody else to come. They need, but that conversation can happen. At the nine one one center, so the appropriate people can be dispatched.
Yeah, can you describe nine eight eight a little bit more? Because I, when you asked about it, I didn't see a whole lot of hands up in terms of people who. Indicated they were aware of it or knew much about it.
Yeah, sure. It's, you know, it's taken the place of, um, it used to be the, the suicide hotline. And now it is, um, it is the, essentially the behavioral health. Um, call line that can be made, not just for those calls that ha- that may. Um, somebody who is, um. Is contemplating, um, completing suicide, but other health issues as well. So it's a broad, it's a broader. Um, health line and, um. And, and that's, and that's what it was designed for is to really kind of encompass all of that. And what they've done is they've. Created regional centers, regional call centers for those calls to be answered. And we are in, um, our, our region is based out of Springfield. Um, Burl has our region. And so it's a Springfield, um, the folks there, so that it's, you're supposed to have. Some sense of, of the resources within your region. So that the person can be directed to the correct resources for whatever's going on.
Kathy, question?
Yes, um. I want to see it, make sure that I understood correctly. It sounds like you're saying that now there is a mental health liaison. That would be able to respond with the sheriff's, um, department, sheriff deputies to calls where. It sounds like a mental health person is needed. Is that correct?
Um, so. What's happening, what's going to happen at the beginning, I suspect, is the, the, um, the nine eight eight. Call taker will dispatch someone if it's not, if, it, I mean, the. It may, it may involve the sheriff as well, but it's particularly designed for being able to dispatch somebody. Um, one of the nine eight eight folks out to that, to whomever needs it. If it's a joint issue, it may be the Community Behavioral Health Liaison Person. Who is dispatched to go with, um, to go with law enforcement. Um, that's the, the program that was created by the Department of Mental Health, right? So it, it may be that. Um, it kind of depends on the jurisdiction as to where we are, but. Um, but that's commu- Community Behavioral Health Liaison may be the, the person who is dispatched if it's going with. You know, we don't have yet here in Boone County, um, a mobile crisis team. I'm, I'm hoping that this sort of gets us towards that mobile crisis team approach. And I know that's been a, um, a desire for the Columbia Police Department to have that mobile crisis response team. So, you know, um, I think that the good interim step is having that nine eight eight call taker there. So that we can get people comfortable with who gets dispatched on these calls. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, I, the, uh, Community Behavioral Health Person was, who I was thinking was, was what you were talking about. I think I got a little confused on that.
No, ma'am, and, and so the nine eight eight thing, the nine eight eight call taker, um, is gonna be so, is somebody from Burl. But whether that's, that. Prob, but isn't, isn't going to be the CBHL. The CBHL is not, is not, it's not the same person. So they may end up dispatching us the CBHL to go with somebody.
I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I see two hands raised. I see Mari and I see Dr. Lethold, yeah.
Whatever, David, you can go first if you want.
Okay, my, my question is, relates to that federal rule. Uh, that the people lose their benefits. After thirty days after their bail.
Mm-hmm.
And who, who can change that? And what's the prospect of it being changed?
So, so you've hit the nail on the head as usual. Um, so there's, there's two aspects of it. First of all. Our, our wonderful folks in, in Washington need to fix it. Um, I've been on the Hill several times with the task force that was a NACO. And National Sheriff's Association Task Force. And I, you know, we went to our senators. Who said, oh my God, that's gonna cost us a lot of money if we, if we do that. And my question to then Senator Blunt was, well, Senator. Uh, if you're saying that's gonna cost you a lot of money, uh, that makes no sense because these are people who. Already are eligible for these benefits. So you're saying that it's going to cost you money to actually pay? The benefits, aren't you already budgeting for that? Or are you presuming that X percentage? Of the people who are eligible will be in jail and then become. Um, uh, unconnected with their benefits. But that's, that's one of the problems. We, we need to get, we need to push. Our senators, particularly, there's support, there is actually support in the House. The Senate is where it's held up. Um, we have two, um, two bills that are still sitting in the Senate. Trying to get across the finish line to set, to, um, to at least. Um, pull back that, that, um, policy as to the people who are pre-adjudication. That's, that's what needs to happen on the federal level. On the state level, they could expand Medicaid. And if they expanded Medicaid for that population, then we'd be okay. But, you know, but they've created, they've made that into a partisan issue and it shouldn't be, should have nothing to do with it. It's expand it for that population.
Mari?
Um, I just wanted to comment pertaining to the previous conversation about, um. Mobilizing mental health professionals who can go out with the emergency responders. Um, Carissa spoke to the League of Women Voters. A few months ago and that question came up and her response was that, um. Hardly, it's simply a person power issue that there's such a shortage of mental health professionals. That to have someone sort of waiting around on call. Hasn't been seen as the most effective use of those resources. So I just wanted to raise that and see if you saw any. Potential solutions to that, Janet?
Uh, you know, to my mind, um. And again, this is, this is a decision that's been made sort of DMH and the various providers. Um, to my mind, the, the CBHL in every. That's, that's designated by Burl and DMH to be in each community. Um, that person needs to be, i- if, if law enforcement in a community says that's how we want that person to be. Mobilized, then that's how that person should be mobilized. Um, I, I suspect that our, um, our police department and our sheriff. Would appreciate having that, the, the CBHL actually. Um, able to drop whatever they're doing and, and go out on a call. Cause that, I, you know, um. Even though.
They would have other, they would have other duties.
Right, but if, but if, yeah, but, but that needs to be a priority. Because that would alleviate a lot of pressure on, um, on our, um, our law enforcement agencies. For them to be, um, completely CIT certified. Um, they need, they need support to go out on these calls. And that to me is the best use of that CBHL to, to make that CBHL part of that mobile crisis team. I mean, that, that resource is already designated and as, um, Mary Jo was talking, you know, it's like, there's two. And, and Al, there's. and, and Al, there's, you know, to say that somebody can, um, take care of, you know, ten or eleven counties is ridiculous. We need, there needs to be one CBHL per county at least. I mean, it's crazy. How, you know, how can you have, how can that person respond to all of that? It's just nuts.
Alice?
Uh, um, um, so Janet, is there any hope that we could still pass a means test in Boone County for the senior tax? Or did the state make that preempt that?
State preempted it. It's age sixty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Suzanne?
This may be a silly question, but I always see these, um, Columbia police cars driving around with saying, um, community service, or I can't remember what the title is on, they're not police, they're something else. So what is their role?
Um, so that's a Columbia thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. It's okay. That's, um, you know, they're, they're, um, I, I don't know what their, um, the, the breadth of their authorization is, but they are, um, they're, they're there to assist motorists mo- mostly. Um, that's, that's mostly their, their, their role, but I don't know if they have extra duties as assigned. Um, but it's mostly motor, motorist assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Are there any other questions? Janet, do you want to tell us a little bit about your campaign?
Um, it's happening. Uh, you know, you know, it's, um, I, I went up to Hallsville the other day and, um, because the, they were cutting the ribbon on a new wing in their middle school. And, um, I talked to John Downs, who had been the, um, superintendent of Hallsville Schools for some time and a real advocate for education. And, um, I, I worry, honestly, I, I just worry about, um, what could happen in our community if we allow folks who really don't value public education to be, um, part of the commission and to, um, to have and to have an active role in what happens in this county. Um, the attacks on, on public education are happening across the country. They're happening on a national level. They're happening, happening on a state level. Um, this community is built on education. And if, if we want the kids in our community to become leaders, to take, um, to take ownership of our community, they have to have access to a strong educational system. And I think that to me is a big piece of, you know, when, when we all make choices about, um, who we're, um, who we're supporting or who we're voting for. We have to think about education. We have to think about the children that are going to be our, our, the next generation that are going to be the leaders in this community. And, um, and so I would ask that everybody think about that and remember, um, who, you know, what's important for the, for the future of this community?
Word.
Permit me to declare for the record that it was an honor to do time with you before I bailed out. I also hope that you can add to the comments you made about substance to tell this group what the needs of your campaign are and how members of this group can help.
Um, so the, the best thing I, for me, and I think for all of us is to do something that, um, that's being done and, and Bob probably knows this sort of by osmosis. Um, there's a group called When She Votes here in Boone County. And it's, it, it was formed by women of the League of Women Voters and of the NAACP to express the, um, the position that every person, men and women alike, need to know the issues, need to register to vote and need to vote. And every person needs to then talk to ten other people and make sure they know the issues and they're registered to vote and they vote. And each one of those, those other ten people talk to ten more people. We have to get people to the ballot and, and to the, to the polling places. We have to get people to, to understand what's at stake. And, and I think, you know, if we can energize people and help them understand the, um, the critical time that we're in, that will help. Um, cause I, I, I look at this, this, the situation that's happening in this country now. Um, and, and I don't just think about my race. I think about the future of this country. We're at a crossroads. And, um, and people have to understand that our future, that our form of government is at risk. This world is at risk. We are, we are looking, you know, in, in so many ways, this feels like I'm, I think my grandparents and my parents as, as children even were, were feeling in the nineteen twenties and the nineteen thirties and the nineteen forties. We are, this, this time is too much like that time. And so I think we have to get people to the polls, to, to the polling places to say enough. We value our form of government. And we value the freedoms that we have enjoyed. But that we value them and we're willing to stand up for them.
Uh, okay. Time for just two more quick questions. Uh, Suzanne and then Marie.
Um, having had to live in District forty-four for the last next number of years, look ahead. I would do anything I can do to help not have that continue to be uh, your job because she is, you, you described her perfectly. When you said, you know, like just doing ho-hum, I repeatedly tried to meet with her about certain important issues to me. And she, uh, she blew me off. I did, I was at the Capitol once a week and she wouldn't even look me in the eye.
Well, um,
You don't have to answer. I'm just putting other-
Yeah. And I, and, and I appreciate that. And, and I think it's, you know, um, unfortunately, since we don't have a very active press anymore, it becomes incumbent on, on all of us to spread the word about, about things that we know. Um, you know, some, a, a friend of mine was telling me that in his, in his group on a national level, people had been, had been talking about a YouTube video of my opponent, um, condemning children in Boone County for being lazy. And, um, and wanting therefore to do away with child labor laws.
I put it to a T. Yes. I have to say that when I come by the office, I'll get some of your handouts. Um, I was, uh, going door to door for Greg Bush for his campaign and I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was really fun talking to people. It can seem intimidating at first, but yeah, it was, it was really nice.
Well, and I appreciate that. I, it's important just to talk to people because I think people, especially without really an active press, an active local press. It's important to, to get the word out, to, to help people understand what's happening and, and what's at stake.
Thank you. Last question, Marie.
Um, I just want to add to what Janet said about encouraging people to vote and, and go one step further and say encourage them to vote down the ballot because the ballots are going to be long and involved this time. We're going to have six or seven initiatives. We're going to have lots of state level candidates, lots of local county and local level candidates. So that needs to be emphasized. Don't just go and vote for president. You have to keep going.
Precisely.
Pam, Pam, quick comment?
Perhaps someone like Stephen Weber could do a down ballot postcard who has the resources. I think we should all ask him.
We're, I think we're planning, um, a postcard with all of the candidates on it. The pictures of all of the candidates. So that should be nice.
That, that won't be a postcard. That will be a mailing that's eight by eleven. That's not a postcard. Yeah.
Okay. I, I was at the office yesterday and I asked Adrian Frank how, how it's going, going door to door. And he said, people are really excited. So I hope that makes some of us feel better.
Yeah.
Can I just add that I have done a lot of advocacy for nursing. And I have to tell you, ninety percent of the people I talk to don't even know what district they're in. The apathy is just huge.
Well, it's, it's, so when they come into the office, I take them around and we find their house on the map and so they, so they do know.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of work to do. People didn't know who Crystal was when I talked to a number of my friends after all of my cameras. I, I, I got a lot of friends to vote for her, but I don't know all those people out there. We have a lot of work to do. But it's really upbeat. It's really upbeat. So.
Yeah. Claire McCaskill mentioned her on her podcast yesterday.
And on the fourteenth, Meet the Press, interviewed Crystal Quaid for five and a half minutes. I put it on the Democratic Facebook site. It's a great interview. And in that interview, Kristen Welker kind of set it up, challenged Harris to come to Missouri to, uh, talk about abortion rights. She could help Kunts, um, she could help Crystal. And I believe one of the two of them from the national ticket will come. And somebody said, I pick winners. So I'm picking Crystal.
Hey.
Okay. Well, thanks for, uh, being with us today, Janet.
Thank you.
And
Thank you.
The, the whole initiative sounds exciting. I know it takes a long time to, to really get these things going the way we want to. It looks like we're making good progress on it.
We are.
And of course, best of luck with the campaign.
Well, thank you. But, and, and, you know, I'm just, I'm hopeful we can get this stuff off, across the finish line. The, the best thing that's happened this summer was that, um, Rusty Black, who is probably going to be Appropriations Chair in the Senate, had his chief of staff reach out to me and ask for, um, a budget for a, um, re-entry navigator, how much that would cost. And so I got, I, I said, okay, here, here it is. And I sent the, the job description and everything to them. And, um, and I reiterated something that is really important about that position, that it be a peer support specialist, somebody with lived experience to do that work because it's critical for people who are coming out of that system to, um, to work with somebody who, um, who has been there before. So I'm really excited about it. And, and with, um, Senator Black uh, supporting it, I'm hopeful that we can get that through. So thank you all so much.
So now, now declare the regular meeting of Mule Skinner's underway and Pam, give us some announcements for us.
Well, I think we were going to vote on this first, weren't we not?
Okay, yeah, we do. We do need to do that. Um, and we did, we did receive that, I believe, last Saturday, a list of the recommendations of the committee in terms of, uh, how to, how to fund our candidates.
Mm-hmm. So that, can you all see the list?
Most of it, I think. Starts with Janet. She's at the top.
Uh huh. She, that is the first one. I rearranged it so that it's sort of goes it's all the county people at the top. So it's Janet two hundred, Justin two hundred, Jenna Riddell two hundred, Sherry Terrell two hundred, Stephanie Morrell two hundred, Stephen Weber one hundred, Jeanette Cass. This is people, the next two are people running for Congress. Jeanette Cass two hundred, Bethany Mann two hundred. Now it is, um, state offices. Mark Osmack, who's running for treasurer, one hundred. Barbara Pfeiffer for Missouri Secretary of State, two hundred. Elad Gross, two hundred. Richard Brown for Lieutenant Governor, two hundred. Crystal Quaid for Governor, three hundred. Lucas Kunts, two hundred. Adrian one fifty because we've already given him two hundred. Dave Raisel, three fifty. Greg Bush, three fifty. And then one hundred for the two ballot issues. And I know there are now two more. But, uh, that's the ones we knew about already. The reproductive rights ballot issue, one hundred. And the Missouri Healthy Family, which is basically in raising the minimum wage, grab gradually, one hundred. And then I put some more in, at the, at the bottom about our, our checking and what is left. And that is a total of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Now, do you want, do you want to move approval of, of this list?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussing? I know these, these items were discussed in detail during the committee meeting, so.
I, I do want you to know that, uh, Peter gave me a list of probably seven people in the House who have, um, rather clo- close ra- races in other parts of the state. I, I didn't have time to put their names down or where they're from, but we might consider that later. And I'm hoping that people will start paying their dues a little early this time, and then we'll have more money to, to give people as well.
I, I think Al brought up that we might be asking our members to not only do a membership, but to give extra that people could afford to, and that could raise more money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they will probably bring that, uh, it, not really proposal per se, but certainly a suggestion to, to coming meeting.
I'm quite sure we did that two years ago.
Yeah.
And it, it brought in some more and it was, it was useful to have it, as it turned out.
Yeah. And, and a lot of Mule Skinners were generous when I did fundraising for Crystal's event. And I'm going to be sending her three hundred dollars as soon as I get my Act Blue figured out.
I'd like to call the question. All in favor, yeah, raise your hand or say aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then the motion passes and, uh, we can go ahead and, and distribute thi- these funds, uh, as, as we can.
Uh, thanks to the committee for, uh, um, for investigating this and also to Pam who will be issuing the checks.
We'll be writing a lot of checks here. I think that I could not put up both of the, um, attachments at the same time. So I got to leave real quickly and then come back so I can get the announcements up. So I'll do it as fast as I can. Well, wait a minute. Maybe I can do it here.
Is there any other business before, before the meeting today, before we go to announcements?
I just want to put a plug in for the twenty-fourth Saturday. I'm sure Pam will mention it. The reorg meeting for folks to attend. That would be wonderful.
Um, I looked all over the web for the information about tonight's open house and I couldn't find it.
Open house where?
Where? At, um, it was in the chat.
Oh, I didn't see.
Oh, I can't see.
That was one that Sarah-
The lady who used to do all the community arts and crafts with kids and all that kind of stuff. I can't remember what her name is, but anyway.
Sarah, Sarah put that.
Sarah, are you still here?
Sarah's kind of been busy with other things, so.
Yeah.
I heard my name.
You want, you want to plug the open house for a minute?
Oh, yeah. Uh, we'll be here at Access Arts, uh, at the main campus, the old, uh, Naomos Old House and the other three buildings we own. Um, we'll be here five to seven tonight. Um, we'll have demonstrations going on in the clay studio, people weaving, table limbs you can try yourself, snacks, a prize drawing, uh, craft activity. If you bring out a t-shirt or a tote bag, you can screen print it or, or we'll screen print it for you. Um, yeah, it's free. We'd love to see you.
And what's the address again?
Uh, we're at seventeen twenty-four McAllister. It's right at, uh, McAllister and sixty-three on the north end of the business of, uh, Old Highway sixty-three, almost all the way to the Business Loop.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you. And I will get it in before I send this out as well.
Okay. Well, as- I keep getting interrupted, so that's why I've got myself turned off.
No, I'm glad that we had that. I, I didn't know about it. So as always, it was really wonderful to hear from Janet. I just, she astounds me. The positive things she has done for our county. Next week, we will have Adrian Plank. And he will give us a campaign update and a glimpse of his priorities for the next two years. The week after that will be Labor Day weekend and we will not have, have a meeting. So, uh, the Missouri State Fair is still on and evidently there was quite something yesterday when Lucas and our senator ran into each other. But, um, they're needing somebody for Sunday from nine to one and four to seven to, to work the Democrats' table at the Missouri State Fair. Also Saturday at nine AM at Roachport, there is a MoDOT Saturday Superintendent Talk on the Katy Trail to learn about the Roachport Bridge and what's going on right now. You meet one point five miles from the trailhead. Also Saturday, uh, I just got an email from Reproductive Rights Missouri for Constitutional Free, Freedom. And they are asking people to canvas and talk to Columbia voters tomorrow from ten to two or Sunday from one to five. And if you're interested, there is the link to sign up. And they will give you a briefing on the ballot issue and then two and a half hours of canvassing. Tomorrow is the Osher at Missouri, Mizzou, Engaging in Aging at the Boone Electric Cooperative Community Building. And we are, we can go as citizens, but we, we can't have a table there because we are a political group. But it's essentially finding other ways to volunteer in the community. And then there'd be some entertainment as well.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's from Oshers. I think Boone Electric cannot host political groups.
You're right, you're right. I, I remember now that, that they are not allowed. When you sign up to, to, uh, use that space, political groups can't. Okay, there's Rally Blue Training Sunday at two PM at the Democratic Headquarters. And if you're interested in that, it's two hours, two times a month. And there is their email. Sunday is a postcard writing party from three to six at the office. Peter and Linda Lederman are hosting that. Tuesday, August the twentieth, at the Democratic Headquarters. Uh, Deb Finley is doing voter registration training. And she also requests donations for stamps to send out the postcards. Wednesday at the Ark is a public meeting by the city for stormwater and wastewater priorities for the city for the next five years, or you can go and do the survey at Be Heard Como. Dot gov. Boone County Master Plan Virtual Open House. This is a county event, and it is online, a webinar. So there's the link to-